Good evening. I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees on June 6, 2024, beginning at 7:10 p.m. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public and we welcome everyone. We thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting and we do have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we must remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with our opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Mike in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(laughter) Don't mess it up. Do it, Larry.
(inaudible).
Our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. This is a reminder, including to myself, to please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, we will have a moment of silence. Our first item on the agenda tonight is our presentation, our recognition of our outgoing Student Leadership Advisory Board, Dr. Smith.
It is my honor to welcome Dr. Jarko up to the podium tonight to honor our SLAB students, Student Leadership Advisory Board, just to be clear for everybody. Let's give them a round of applause before TJ gets started.[134.38][134.38](applause)
Good evening, Board President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith. It's my distinct honor to be here tonight to present to you our Student Leadership Advisory Board for 2324. As a leader in this district, I have the opportunity every day to work with some of the best leaders, and from the adult lens, from principals to teachers and so on, but I also have an amazing opportunity to see, to work with our student leaders as well who are here tonight. They've done outstanding work this year, and we get an opportunity tonight to recognize them, I'm super proud of their work. The group of students is comprised of our junior class presidents from each of the six traditional high schools, as well as a member from Arlington Collegiate and also Arlington College and Career. In addition, we have two presidents this year, co-presidents, who provide leadership to these returning SLAB members. The purpose of the group of students has been this year to represent the student opinions voice in each of our campuses, to provide that voice to students, of the students, to the Board of Trustees and the AISD community at large, and to assist in building relationships between students, the Board of Trustees, campuses, senior staff, and superintendent. They're assigned a partner board member and they meet with the members of the Board of Trustees. SLAB members have no official voting rights, but they provide a very, very valuable insight into our district and it's nice got the opportunity to learn about the budgeting process in our board workshop. What has impressed me most about this year's group of students is their ability to genuinely listen, to provide feedback, their presentation itself when they're working with members of the school community, the ability to express their opinions in a very mature way that's always received well by others, and their passion to learn in order to make a difference. They just really exhibit those leadership qualities. They showed those qualities in several ways. I'll just highlight a few real quick. One would be to serve on the calendar committee to help us to produce the 2425 Arlington AISD calendar, to serve on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. They assisted with the Toys for Tots drive and other volunteer work. They also expressed their voice at trustee talks, and they provided feedback to our school leaders at each of their respective campuses. They always go above and beyond, oftentimes attending board meetings, and they will finish their summer work this summer by getting some feedback on their resumes and college applications as their last event. You might ask what I'm most proud about with this group? It's just pretty simple answers, that every single time they went to event, each of these one young men and women were recognized by an adult for their ability to go ahead and to represent themselves very well. For that, I'm very, very proud, and I think that we owe them a round of applause.[278.33][278.33](applause) Tonight, they'll receive very well-deserved letters of recommendation from each board member for their exemplary service to their respective communities. Leaders, when I call your name, if you can come to the podium to receive your letter of recognition. We're going to start with our outgoing student body presidents, both of which just were two of our nearly 4,000 graduates last week, and they've graduated at or near at the top of their classes. We'll start off with Emiliano Gutierrez.[307.64][307.64](applause) Emiliano is headed to Harvard University next year, so we'll give him a round of applause.[321.64][321.64](applause) Next, we'll recognize Abel Hernandez from Arlington Collegiate.[329.02][329.02](applause) Abel is graduating with almost 70 college hours, already has an associate in hand, is heading to the University of Texas at Arlington. Emiliano and Abel, it's been a privilege to work with both of you this year, and I can't wait to hear about your continued leadership journey in the years to come. We also want to recognize our students who have served on the SLAB for this school year. We have several of them in attendance and a few of them that are engaged in their busy lives outside of school, I'll highlight that a little bit. But we're going to start first with our newly-elected SLAB president for 2425. That's going to be Kara Peterson from Lamar High School.[364.31][364.31](applause) And next, we have Andrea Salis. She couldn't be here tonight. She had a prior commitment from Arlington Collegiate High School. Miriam Silva is from Arlington College and Career. She's engaged in a NASA program this week and cannot be in attendance because she's out of town. From Arlington High, we have Michelle Correo, and she is working this evening. And then from Bowie High School, we have Demarius Rico. So, Demarius, if you can come up.[394.11][394.11](applause) From Martin High School, Emma Grace Hurstrom. She's at a youth camp this week and also out of town. From Sam Houston High School, Tabitha Akantimi.[409.03][409.03](applause) And last but not least, Audrey Sia. She had a prior commitment as well tonight from Sagin High School. Students, we look forward to seeing how your leadership impacts your high schools in your senior year, and we're excited to hear about your continued accomplishments in the future. On behalf of everyone in the audience tonight, we thank you for your gift of service and time. Let's give these students one more round of applause.[436.03][436.03](applause)
Thank you, Dr. Jarko, and thank you to our SLAB students. I know that it is a real honor for you to participate in this program, and we really value the feedback that you've given us. I know several of you participated in Bond Oversight Committee over the last year. You came to one of our trustee talks and gave us some really valuable feedback, and so thank you. And congratulations to those of you going on to college, and I look forward, hopefully, to seeing those of you who are seniors sticking around and not being strangers next year. At this time, we'll move on to Presentation B, recognition of our Arlington AISD Principals and Assistant Principals of the Year. Dr. Smith.
I'm excited to welcome up Doctors Dalla and Morales tonight, and I believe they're going to be introducing our award recipients this evening.
Quick change. We're actually going to have Dr. Troper, who's up here with me. I mean-
I didn't mean to leave him out. I just read my script.[506.31][506.31](laughter) Sorry, Grayson.
You're fine. Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith. It's our pleasure, Office of School Leadership, to come up to you tonight and present the Administrators of the Year and tell you a little bit about how we recognized our Principals this year. So, we had a unique opportunity. We kind of combined Principals National, I'm sorry, Principals National Principal Day on May 1st, and we combined that with announcing our winner. So, it was, it was a lot of fun, and I'll get into that in a little bit. We also recognized 18 Principals for our Leadership in Action Award, and then we also had a Rookie of the Year recipient, and we'll kind of get into that in a little bit. But we also did have a Principal of the Year for Elementary and Secondary, as well as an Assistant Principal and Dean of the Year for Elementary and Secondary. So, just a quick picture from that National Principals Appreciation Day. I heard a few giggles in the back. I think that's from the Principals. We decided to reward them with a little bit of competition. We had the Battle of the Learning Communities. If you ask them, I think they'll tell you they had a pretty good time doing some fun games. Dr. Lee, who is the Executive Director over SSN, told me that I needed to make sure to point out that they did win the Battle of the LC, but my junior high Principals also asked me to make sure to let everyone know we'll be coming for it for next year.[589.04][589.04](laughter) And so, I'm going to hand it over to Grayson to talk about our leadership and actual awards.
Board President Chapa, Dr. Smith, Board of Trustees from the board, thanks for having us tonight. We're happy to be here, and it's, we just had a lot of fun. This was a great process. This day, also, I want to hold Dr. Smith to, he said that next year, he's thinking about having a senior leadership team out there to compete with the Principals, so we're looking forward to that.
I want to be clear, we're going to win.[623.16][623.16](laughter) So, if we do that, I just want to, I want to throw that-
We can almost guarantee that you will.[627.66][627.66](laughter) All right. So, the first award that I'll talk to you guys about tonight is the Leadership in Action Award, Passion for the Work. Passion for the Work really recognized Principals for risk-taking, for high expectations, for owning their work, and for taking action. And so, the EDs select for each one recipient from each of the LCs. So, we had Leslie Maroni from Lamar High School, Vanna Shaw Steins from Barnett Junior High, Jacqueline Burden from Foster Elementary School, Crystal Green from Amos, Kristy Wilks from Beckham Elementary School, and Nancy Zayas from Rankin Elementary School. These are the recipients for Passion for the Work and selected by the EDs.[679.04][679.04](applause) The second Leadership in Action Award is the dedication to the team. So, we honor Principals who really show outstanding growth mindset, innovation, putting students first, those kinds of things. And again, each of the EDs selected a deserving Principal from their LC to be recognized, and they were Billy Lenson from Sagin High School, Jason Davis from Bailey Junior High, Mary Helen Burnett from Dunn Elementary School, Sari Brooks from Piercey Elementary School, Sarah Brooks, excuse me, from Piercey Elementary School, Chelsea Broughton from McNutt, and Stephanie Salala from Spear Elementary School. And these are the Principals who won the dedication to the team.[726.00][726.00](applause) The third of the Leadership in Action Awards is Commitment to Personal Growth. With this award, we honor, we honor Principals, I'm sorry, I had, dedication to the team, I messed up the criterion. We honor dedication to the team recipients for being culturally responsive, promoting shared vision, and making every interaction count. The Commitment to Personal Growth is, we talk to, we honor Principals for showing a tremendous growth mindset, for being innovators, and for putting students first at their campuses in every decision. And these recipients were Juan Villarreal from Sam Houston High School, Kelly Smith from Shackelford Junior High, Dr. Mark Basham from Butler Elementary School, Lisnel Gonzalez from Crow Leadership Academy, Kalise Kelly from South Davis Elementary School, and Nathan Tay from Adams. These are our recipients for Commitment to Personal Growth.[789.00][789.00](applause) So, in this celebration, every year, the EDs always get together and we talk about our first-year Principals, and we honor a Rookie of the Year. And this year, their Rookie of the Year recipient was Chandler Garcia from Williams Elementary It's, it's a challenging time to be a first-year Principal. It's a challenging time to be a veteran, and we really appreciate the job that Chandler did this year amongst all of these first-year Principals that really did a fantastic job for us this year. So, in a second, we'll talk about AP Dean of the Year and Principals of the Year. There is a process that's involved in this. First of all, the nominees, the individuals are nominated by teachers and campus staff at their campuses. Then, a nomination committee is formed at the campus, and they submit the application along with artifacts of evidence of the outstanding work that those nominees are doing. Then, the Principal of the Year Committee goes through those applications and selects finalists. After that, we had an interdepartmental team that went out, site team that went out to each of the campuses of the nominees and visited the campus to see their outstanding work. While we were there, we observed classrooms and other areas of the school. We interviewed teachers, we interviewed students, and we interviewed parents. And so, it's a pretty involved process and a fun one. I love getting out on campuses and seeing the work and really talking to people who are involved in the work. It's just fantastic. So, without further ado, our Elementary Assistant Principal Dean of the Year finalists were George Baylor from Hill Elementary School, Ricardo Butler from Atherton Elementary School, and Lucy Serna from Crouch Elementary School. And our winner was Ricardo Butler from Atherton Elementary, and he's here tonight.[917.76][917.76](applause)
And for Secondary Assistant Principal and Dean of the Year finalists, we had Amber Jordan from Bowie High School, we had Tiffany Seaberry from Nichols Junior High, and Victoria Youngblood Baldwin from Arlington High School, and the winner was Victoria Youngblood Baldwin
All right. That brings us to Elementary Principal of the Year finalists. These were really fun site visits, you know, just kind of sometimes missing the seat and being in a building to be a Principal. It's just so fun to get in a building and talk to the Principals about their practice and talk to the stakeholders there about the work that they're doing. Our nominees were Lee Adams at Morton Elementary, Katuska Errador from Jones Academy, Evelyn Navarro-Gaspard from Webb Elementary School, and Selena Osuna from Remensei Elementary School. And our winner for Elementary Principal of the Year was Selena Osuna from Remensei Elementary.[994.93][994.93](applause)
And our final category was Secondary Principal of the Year, and our finalists were Stacy Humbles from Arlington High School, Leslie Maroni from Lamar High School, and Amber Price from Owlsley Junior High. And our winner for the Secondary Principal of the Year finalist was Amber Price from I had a feeling we would just keep getting louder and louder.[1036.04][1036.04](laughter) So, we hope you enjoyed this presentation of our Principals of the Year. Amber is a junior high Principal in our system, and she put it best when she had a few words to say to all the Principals. She said, "We have a very rich group of Principals, very, very strong in what they do, and to be, to be a finalist, to win it, it just shows, it means a lot because there's just so many great Principals out there." And so, at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Smith and President Chapa, if you'd like to come down and take pictures with our winners, winners, if you'd like to meet me here.[1072.63][1072.63](music)
Okay, well, that was, I, that was a great presentation. I'm so glad in this district that we try to find ways to recognize good work going on wherever we can, whether that's teachers, whether that's our administrators. I have started wearing t-shirts more often with, to district events, and some of you see me in a shirt that says, "America Needs Public Schools." But as much as we need public schools, we can't have good public schools. We need good staff and folks to run them, and we have that here in Arlington AISD, and I'm glad that we're honoring that tonight.[1141.04][1141.04](applause) We'll move on now to Program Presentation, Item C, recognition of our outgoing Board President, Melody Fowler. Tonight, I'm honored to acknowledge our outgoing President, Melody Fowler. Ms. Fowler led our district with compassion, dedication, and determination. Her two years had a few challenges, such as providing leadership as everyone worked around the clock to help her students catch up after COVID-19. She, and we, endured two superintendent searches.[1177.76][1177.76](laughter) She mitigated potentially divisive issues with grace and understanding. She did so many more things that would just be too numerous to name here, but I also want to touch on a few things that Ms. Fowler will be known for pretty much forever. She led our district through many exciting changes. During her tenure, the district added new PTech programs at Sam Houston and Sagin High Schools. The district built three new elementary schools. The district authorized a new junior high, Joey Rodriguez Junior High. District passed consecutive, bold pay increases that pushed the AISD into the top tier of DFW districts for compensation. She showed up at countless district events. She answered emails day and night, and I can attest to that because sometimes I was on them.[1233.83][1233.83](laughter) And she represented the district at multiple clubs and organizations across town. If you were coming to AISD events in the last two years, and really, since 2018, you have seen Ms. Fowler. There's not a way to measure her contribution as a tireless advocate for her students and staff. She is a teacher, she has the heart of a teacher, and all of us learned from her. Ms. Fowler, you left this district better than when you started, and you're still going to make it better. You're not going anywhere, and I can only hope to do the same. On behalf of the entire board, I want to thank you for your service as your Board President. I know I have big shoes to fill, and at this time, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues to share any remarks that they might have.[1274.83][1274.83](applause)
Okay. Thank you, President Chapa. Ditto everything that Mr. Chapa said. And Melody, I said this last time, and I'll say it again, you are Arlington AISD's number-one fangirl. I mean, you even have a basketball hat on.[1305.54][1305.54](laughter) Now, I, that parts for the Mavs, that's okay. But no, seriously, you have, you have given us the graceful and gritty leadership throughout this past two years, and you rolled up your sleeves, and there's nothing that you would ask of us as your colleagues that you wouldn't have done yourself, and we definitely appreciate that. You always, always seek to understand, then to be understood. And I know that we've done some shuffling with officers, but just the fact that you are on this board, and we all know, you're a board member before you're an officer, it's the, it's the board member and the governance in you that makes you shine, and no matter what role or what title you have or don't have, I'm so grateful for Arlington AISD and as your colleague that you're on this board. Thank you for your leadership.[1355.54][1355.54](applause) Okay, you ready?
Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, President Chapa, and thank you, Melody, for your service. You preceded me on the board by a year or so, and you've been the consummate cheerleader as Brooke Lim pointed, or Sarah pointed out, our biggest fan of the community. You've represented us well, and you've been a steady hand in your leadership as President. Not, as Mr. Chapa said, with not just one superintendent search, but two. And you just, your positive attitude, I think, has kind of helped been the cohesive force to make this board a great governance body. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Thank you.[1429.04][1429.04](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. Fowler.
Well, I just want to say how appreciative I am of every one of you and for your dedication to the board and for allowing me to serve as your President for the past two years. I have loved every moment of it, even the late-night emails and phone calls. I really have loved leading, and I just thank you all so much. Every one of you is so dedicated to this district, and you put in so many hours and so much thought that people aren't even aware of. So, I want to thank each and every one of you for your service to this district, and together, we can make it even better in AISD. Thank you so much.[1473.41][1473.41](applause)
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Ms. Fowler, will you join me and your colleagues out front here to take some pictures and also to present you with a nice, traditional engraved gavel that says, "Melody Fowler, Arlington AISD Board President, 2022 to '24?" After we take our pictures, we'll go into a five-minute recess for the folks who would like to take pictures outside or take pictures up front. You're welcome to do that. Board members will say hi to a few folks and honor, say hi to our honorees tonight as well, and then we'll get back here and start business. And for those of you who want to stay and join the party, you're welcome to do that.[1513.83][1513.83](laughter) And for those of you who would like to head out for the evening, you're welcome to do that as well. All right. We are back from a quick recess. Next, we'll open up our public hearing on our optional flexible school day program for 2024, sorry, 2023, 2024. Dr. Smith.
It's my honor to invite Dr. Tamela Horton, our Executive Director of Transformational Learning Up, to present to you this evening.
Board President Chapa, Board members, and Dr. Smith. During the 2023-24 academic year, 87 students were enrolled as flexible attended students at Arlington Collegiate High School, participating in optional flexible school day program, OFSDP, and 96 students were enrolled as flexible attended students at Arlington Collegiate and Career High School, participating in OFSDP. For both campuses, these students graduated in May 2024. They were able to participate in a variety of college courses offered during traditional school hours as well as non-traditional hours. OFSDP allowed students to participate in non-traditional course times that included evening classes and Saturday classes. Students had the flexibility to take courses at their home campus, the Dan Diaper Career Tech Center, multiple Tarrant County College campuses, Texas Wesleyan University, and the University of Texas at Arlington. This flexibility helped all students to acquire their high school diplomas, as well as allowing most of the class of 2024 to earn their Associate's Degree. At Venture, during the same academic year, approximately 30 students were enrolled as flexible attended students at Venture High School, participating in OFSDP. These students were able to graduate at various times throughout the school year as they completed their graduation requirements. They were able to participate in a variety of courses offered during the traditional school hours, as well as non-traditional hours. OFSDP allowed students to participate in non-traditional course times that included evening classes and Saturday classes. Students had the flexibility to take courses at Venture High School and the Dan Diaper Career Tech Center. This flexibility helped all students to acquire their high school diplomas.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. It is my understanding, Ms. Forsberg, that we have no registered speakers for this? Okay. Well, since we have no registered speakers, the public hearing on the Optional Flexible School Day Program, 2023-2024, is now closed. We will now move on to open the public hearing on the Optional Flexible School Day Program for 2024-2025. Dr. Smith.
Dr. Horton.
Optional Flexible School Day Program, OFSDP, may be implemented for students in grades nine through 12 who are at risk of dropping out of school, participating in an approved early college high school plan, attending a state-approved innovative rented and redesigned school, and/or require an alternate academic route due to denial of credit in one or more classes because of not meeting state attendance requirements. For the upcoming year, we will continue to rely on this program for our district's early college high school students, venture students, and traditional high school students needing a flexible schedule. In doing so, the OFSDP will grant students in these transformational programs access to a flexible schedule beyond that of a traditional 180-day, five-day-per-week requirement, including courses on weekends, night classes, extended day classes, and flexible schedules throughout the year to accommodate courses beyond the traditional 18-week semester. Under the OFSDP designation, the school district may receive funding based on the actual time a student is in attendance from as low as 45 minutes a day to a maximum of 10 hours a day. Minutes are accumulated to maximize the average daily attendance a student can earn during the 12-month period. Students must apply to participate. They must meet eligibility requirements and be afforded certified instructors in all educational services for which they're eligible, as well as comply with the appropriate assessments during the regularly scheduled assessment period.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Ms. Forsberg, I understand that we have no speakers. Ms. Forsberg, I understand that we have no speakers for this hearing as well.
That is correct.
Since we have no registered speakers, the public hearing on the optional flexible school day program 2024-2025 is now closed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. We now come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on our posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on the agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net/BoardMeetingSpeakerRequest, no later than 3:00 PM on the day of the board meeting. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
Yes, President Chapa, we have one registered speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. We'll now proceed to our open forum for agenda items. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You will have three minutes to speak. Ms. Forsberg will notify you when your time is up, and we ask that you please end your presentation at that time. Receive the list for requesters, and we have Mr. David Jarvis, who is coming, it looks like, to address us on the topic of the lawsuit that he has pending against us. Mr. Jarvis.
I thought that was on the non-agenda items. I'm glad to speak now if you'd rather.
Sure. Mr. Jarvis, thank you for coming down tonight. You have three minutes.
You bet. Thank you. I'm here to speak about a lawsuit that was filed last Friday, May 31, against the school district, trustees individually in the school district, including Dr. Smith. He was at it. The background is very brief here. On April 11, Dr. Smith dismissed four grievances that were pending, Level 3 grievances. On April 19, Mr. Scott Cale dismissed two additional grievances for a total of six. On April 21, I went into the HR department seeking to refile these grievances, and the HR said, "No, you can't. We'll receive them. We will not process them. We will not file them." I said, "But your own policy, your own grievance policy, says the district shall file." That's a mandatory word in my judgment. But the school district on April 21 and again on April 21st refused, excuse me, April 21 and April 28, refused to follow your own policy and file these grievances. On April 28, I sent an email, excuse me, May 28, I sent an email to the board, objecting to the unlawful dismissal of all six grievances, and asked the board to intervene. The board ignored the email, didn't refer me to some other representatives such as Mr. Cale, Dr. Smith, or even Attorney Eichelbaum, to get together and talk it out and see if we can resolve it. I got no response. So, last Friday, on May 31, a lawsuit was filed. The three main points of the lawsuit can be summed up by lawless conduct by this board. There are three examples of the lawlessness by this board. Number one, you have no authority in your own policy to dismiss a grievance. It's just not there. Now, if the grievance is untimely filed, that's different, but there's no allegation that these grievances were untimely filed. So, when Dr., excuse me, Dr. Smith and Mr. Cale dismissed the grievances, there was nothing in the policy to authorize that action. So, that was a lawless action. Number two, I pointed out that this is a violation of state law. Texas Education Code 11.1511(b13) says that it's, the school board is required as a responsibility to make sure every citizen can obtain a board hearing. That's a Level 4 board hearing. That's a violation of state law. I told Dr. Smith that. I told you folks that you ignored that. So, you're blatantly violating your own policy. You're violating state law. And lastly, you're denying my constitutional right to seek redress of grievances under both the United States and Texas constitutions. All these allegations are in a lawsuit that was filed last Friday because you refused to adjust anything. You refused to stop engaging in lawless conduct. You didn't meet with me and say, "Well, this isn't really not lawless conduct. It's lawful, and here's why." No, you ignored me. You're above reproach. I mean, you're above accountability. To give you an idea of the, anyway, you hold yourselves out as guardian of the public trust, but you've betrayed that trust by your activity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. Mr. Eichelbaum, could I ask you some clarifying questions, please? Mr. Eichelbaum, does the, does the school district have a policy against filing successive, repetitive grievances that have already been dismissed on the same subject matter or resolved on the same subject matter?
Board President Chapa, Dr. Smith, board members. Yes, our policy talks about that you're not supposed to repeat, plus you've issued written decisions that are to be appended to the board policy that also says the same thing.
And those were issued in response to prior grievances that Mr. Jarvis filed, correct?
That's correct.
And the grievances that Mr. Jarvis discussed tonight, it was determined that those grievances all deal with subject matters that have already been resolved by this board.
They were either addressed by the board or were untimely and dismissed as untimely, or they didn't meet the definition of a complaint.
And that would be the written decision that we issued about a month and a half ago?
That's correct.
That we don't adopt policies through the grievance procedure?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That is all I have. We will now move on to appointments.
Thank you, President Chapa. I would like to recommend the board ratify the appointment of the individual discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal of Ashworth Elementary.
Do we have a motion to approve the administrative ratification as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Will Banks. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Ms. Fowler. Motion by Mr. Will Banks, a second by Ms. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. The motion carries unanimously. Dr. Smith.
It is my honor to welcome our new Assistant Principal for Ashworth Elementary to the podium, Amanda Whitehead. Please give her a round of applause. Ms. Whitehead, congratulations. We're honored to have you as a part of the administrative team. We know you're going to do amazing work, and I hope you have a few words to say tonight.
I do, thank you. Dr. Smith. President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith, I want to express my sincere gratitude to all of you for the privilege to serve alongside such incredible educators as Assistant Principal at Ashworth Elementary. I'm honored and I'm ecstatic to make a meaningful impact in the lives of our students and our families here in AISD. I also want to say thank you to all of my mentors who are sitting out here, my family, my parents and my family, and especially to my son and daughter, who teach me every single day how meaningful this work is. So, I'm excited, and thank you all so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you all for coming down and supporting her. We will at this time, unless you want to stay again for the party, you can feel free to go outside. There's a backdrop setup. Take pictures and celebrate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Okay, well, we will move on now to our action item, consider the 2024-2025 compensation plan adjustments. Dr. Smith.
Yes, President Chapa, members of the board, I would like to invite Mr. Cale up and Ms. Holly Stanbaugh up as well. As you know, last board meeting, we presented to you some options for your consideration, and I know you've been considering during that time. Tonight, we do need an action taken to enable us to be able to plan appropriately for budget purposes, and as you all know, compensation is the biggest part of our general operating budget. Mr. Cale.
Good evening, President Chapa, board members, and Dr. Smith. Thank you for having us. We're going to review a summary of the presentation that we previously shared, specifically with respect to the recommendations pertaining to compensation adjustments for 24-25 for our employee population. The first slide shows the incremental elements that are being recommended in addition to either a 2%, pardon me, to either a 3% or a 4% increase model, that 3% or 4% on base salary, complemented by these three elements that I'll go through briefly. So, the first is an adjustment to the educational pay scale, educational aid adjustment to the range minimum and alignment for that group for wage compression, moving the starting rate for that range from $17 to $19 per hour for starting salaries. The second element, the adjustment to the auxiliary pay scale, and adjusting that range minimum and alignment for wage compression, and moving its minimum from $15 to $16 per hour for the minimum starting salary. Finally, the adjustment to the licensed specialist in school psychology or the LSSP pay grades. It's become evident that there have been challenges being competitive with both recruitment and retention in that group disproportionate to other groups within the district, and that recommendation is to move it from the grade 3 to the grade 6. You can see on the slide that it shows the individual cost elements associated with each one of those, each one of those recommendations. And again, all three of those recommendations are built in to the models of the 3% and the 4% raise that are now shown on the top of this next slide. So, a 3% raise, including all of those elements, is at $19,723,181, and a 4% raise, again, with each of those previous elements that I just reviewed, is at $23,797,088. In addition to that, and pulled out separately for your consideration, is a recommendation pertaining to increasing the employee healthcare premium. We've got two calculations for you to consider. A $50 per month increase to the current employee premium contribution from the district would be an incremental $2,940,000, and alternatively, a $25 additional employee premium contribution from the district would be $1,470,000. So, if one of those were selected, that respective number would be incremental to the 3% or the 4% model shown above, and I am certainly happy to answer any questions you may have.
Open it up for questions, comments from trustees. Ms. Richardson.
Mr. Cale, one of the things that we heard about in our last meeting was our visually impaired teachers, who were translating the schoolwork into Braille, were not having the same stipend paid that our hearing impaired teachers were receiving. Can you give me a little background of why one specialty would receive that and another one would not?
Certainly. So, our pay models, as well as our stipends, are based on market competitiveness, and so both for the rates of pay that we offer and the types of stipends that we offer, in order to best utilize the budget that we have available, we constantly review the market to see, are we paying at the right level and are we offering the right kind of stipends? And so, most recently, curious to that question, we've spoken to or looked at the compensation plans for 10 separate local area districts, and of those, we found that two offered the visually impaired teacher stipend. They were Grand Prairie and Birdville, and the other eight that we reviewed, either by speaking directly to the HR groups at those districts or by looking at their compensation plans online, showed that they do not currently offer those. So, from a utilization of funds in terms of trying to be competitive on a variety of different elements, from pay to other types of stipends, that's not currently a stipend that the district is offering.
I understand wanting to be competitive and market competitiveness, that if other districts don't offer it, then, you know, do we have to do it? But I also think sometimes we have to look at ourselves and say, "But what is the right thing to do by these human beings, by these teachers?" And I'm sorry that other districts aren't doing it, but is that the right thing? And we want to be a leader in that. Do you, I know I'd asked you earlier today that I was going to ask for some numbers, and so hopefully, are you able to share with me numbers that if we were able to adjust and give them a similar stipend? Can you tell me what that would look like monetarily?
I think I can, and so I can also share with you, if you're interested, what, very briefly, what the vacancies look like, what the tenure looks like and so forth. Because all of those things get pulled into the elements of consideration when trying to determine how to utilize a compensation budget. So, we show that we currently have six PCN or positions for vision teachers. Of those six, four are currently filled and two have just become vacant effective 5/30/24. The average, I looked at it earlier, the median tenure of those positions of the incumbents is actually at seven years. Of the two folks, the two incumbents who just left at the end of this past school year on May 30, they'd been with us each for eight years. So, from a retention standpoint, we were in fairly good shape. I would certainly like to be able to recommend increases across the board on a variety of things, so it doesn't, it doesn't give me any joy to say that it may or may not be necessary from a competitiveness standpoint, but from a retention standpoint and from a recruitment standpoint, it doesn't seem to stand out. That being said, the DEF Ed stipend that we offer is $3,000 annually, and with six current staff in vision teaching, six times three, it would be an annual cost of 18. My junior high teacher would be proud of me at the moment, so.
You don't just do HR, you're also a math whiz. Very impressive. Okay. Do you have anything you want to add to that, knowing where my train of thought is with this?
Only that I completely understand the desire to take care of our staff, and I know that the intentions are absolutely in the right place. We just have the challenge of making the recommendations of utilizing the budget that we do have available, and so that's the reference and why I gave you the data that I did.
I appreciate that. Thank you for looking into that information for me.
Of course.
President Chapa, if I could add on that one as well, I think the point that Mr. Cale makes really well is we would like to be able to do this for everyone, and it's important to realize the system that's in place to study these stipends and to realize what we recommend by what year. And I understand when we receive the feedback and say, "Well, this should really happen," but please know that this is also a system that we have to do in looking at all of the stipends, and we can't do all at the same time most years. And so, there is a reason we have the recommendations that are before you at this time.
Anything further from Ms. Richardson? Next in line, we have Ms. Fowler. Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Chapa. Mr. Cale, help me remember, did we give a raise last year to our security team and to our bus drivers? Was there a stipend or an increase for them?
There was certainly an increase, so the 4% of midpoint increase for all of our position occurred last year, as it had the three subsequent years in addition to that, and that applied to those groups as well.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Next, we have Vice President Muro.
Thank you, President Chapa. Mr. Cale, thank you for the information, and I had a quick question. We know that TRS premiums have increased, and I, looking at this, I'm looking at the contribution, and I'm also looking at those implications in addition to a 3% raise or 4% raise for all employees. Can you please remind us how many of our employees utilize TRS active care, ballpark?
Certainly, about 5,600?
Forty.
I'm so glad Holly's here. 4,900, that was a little high, so 4,900 are approximately are utilizing TRS active care.
So, proportionally, would that be 50%?
So, a little more than 50%, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Vice President Muro. Do we have any more trustees with comments, questions for staff? Ms. Fowler.
Thank you. Thank you, President Chapa. I noticed here we have for the $50 and the 25, do we have any contributions for those that are in the wellness program?
So, we do currently offer $51 per month if you're in the wellness program. That's in place, as are the other. That's in place, as are the other current district contributions, but that's incremental, and it currently exists. These two dollar figures are, are based on the assumption that it would be given directly to all employees participating in the healthcare. It's obviously, though, however, at the board's discretion if they choose to do something different in terms of make that an additional contribution toward wellness as opposed to just a direct increase in premium.
Thank you. And how much increase do we see with TRS active care?
Right, right about ten percent is what the plans for region eleven have been going up. TRS active care went to a regional pricing system, and so our, our area of the state a little higher than some in terms of the cost of healthcare, but going up about ten percent. I, I don't have a crystal ball, but I, but I don't think those increases are done by any means in terms of subsequent years. I anticipate we'll probably have increases for a few years to come after that.
Okay. And the healthcare is higher in this area based on hospital cost and, and doctors' costs? What, what makes us have a higher?
It's a, it's a really good question. Generally speaking, the cost of living of a particular area reflects in healthcare like it reflects in groceries or anything else. And, and I'm not an economist, obviously, but the real estate costs and the transportation, everything tends to, to go along with the ship of that particular area. And when it's specific to healthcare, for example, one, one anomaly is this area has quite a few thing, locations that look like emergency rooms, but they're, they're actually functioning more as private urgent care facilities, but they bill as emergency rooms. And it's, it's little things like that that are subtle, but absolutely contribute to healthcare costs in a metropolitan area like this one.
That makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Cale.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Choppa, if I may, just add one thing. Ms. Fowler's first question, we did present last month on an additional twenty-five dollar option for the wellness plan. The total dollar amount for that was three hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars, I believe. If that is something the board would like to consider this time, that is obviously able, you're able to do that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I was going to ask about that wellness option since it was in a prior presentation.
President Choppa, if I may, just add one point clarification. The reason that, that three hundred and fifty-eight thousand is, is lower than the slide that showed the incremental twenty-five dollars per month at one point four seven is the projection of uptake of utilization of the wellness plan as opposed to giving that twenty-five dollars directly to every person who's, who's in the healthcare plan, if that makes sense.
That makes sense. Thank you. If no one has any more, I see Ms. Richardson's light going.
Yeah. Let's start with Ms. Richardson. Okay. So as I think about in the last few, in the last six months in our meetings that we've had, we've seen from UEA and the different things, where we rank with different districts. And we're always in the top two based on the fact that we have done consecutive raises for the last three years at four percent. So that's four years in a row of four percent raises that has kept us there. That is great. My concern is that we do still have teachers leaving. And one of the things that Dr. Smith has really drilled home with me personally, a book that you had us read, talking about the culture code, did I get the name right? Culture Code. It, it goes back and says, no matter what you pay people, unless you fix the culture, they're not going to want to stay. And so we can look at this three percent and four percent all day long, but if we don't, you know, we're looking at one percent here, but if we don't look at the bigger picture, which is a whole, a wraparound service of what does our culture look like? What are we doing to support our staffs? This one percent really doesn't, it's not make or break. It doesn't affect the cost of living at the end of the day. TRS is still going up ten percent. Fifty and twenty-five dollars doesn't truly fix that problem either. So for my colleagues, I think I just challenge us that no matter what we vote here, we have to realize, we have to do something so much bigger, which is to look at our culture and what do our teachers really need from us besides sitting here on the dais and wavering back and forth between one percent? I just think there's something bigger here we have to think about when we leave tonight.
Thank you, Secretary Richardson. I will also, just to get some conversation going up here, I will start with the premise that, that these are the numbers we're looking at in terms of a compensation plan, which will be in addition to whatever budget numbers we're going to see coming up and that we have seen in the past. And we know, given the environment at the state level with school finance, the money that the, the state is holding hostage, and legislative changes we know are going to happen next year. So we don't have a crystal ball, we don't know what the ledge is going to do, but something significant is going to happen when, with regards to school finance, whether that's vouchers or whether they release the money or they dip into the rainy day fund, something, something's going to happen. It's a pretty rare situation where we had a legislative cycle where the, the state did nothing on school finance. So we have that backdrop and the uncertainty of the future. We also know from the budget numbers that we've seen, because of that, and a variety of other factors, including our declining enrollment, we know that, and we have been, we know that we're going to continue having to make significant adjustments to our bottom line. And there's no way around that. We, at some level, have been, you know, we're trying to, we, we have enrollment growth strategies. We're certainly not the only district in the state that is dealing with an enrollment decline. It's happening really all across the country. So we also have that. But I think countering against that, and something that we drew out at the last meeting, is because of the fiscally responsible decisions that this board and in prior iterations of the board have made, going back over a decade, we have a very significant fund balance. And when we move the money that we had allocated to capital projects as a hedge against inflation back to the fund balance, and we move what was the oil and gas fund back to fund balance, I think the number that Ms. Moss gave us last meeting was that our fund balance is about three hundred and twenty-five million dollars, which is very healthy. It's more than half of our operating expenditures. It's probably more than six or seven months of operating expenses. And that is a great thing. It helps us go out onto the market, and our credit ratings are great when it comes to bonds. So we know that we have a lot to do. We know that we're potentially looking at a varying degrees of a big red number for next year, like everybody else. But we also know that we have, we are in a position where we have given ourselves a runway to still do right by our staff.
Yep.
So we have to balance being responsible with doing right by our staff. All of the options here, I think, would do that. All of the options here, none, none of the options here are going to make or break us next year. None of the options we have here are going to change the significant amount of work we have to do to get our budget in order and deal with some structural issues that we have. I came here tonight prepared to support a three percent raise and some form of help on the healthcare side. I, now having the numbers in front of me, I think I'm torn again, because if I like the fifty dollar option for the healthcare premium, which is almost three million dollars, we'll call it two point nine, but if I did a three percent, if I recommended a three percent at a two point nine, with, the three percent raise at almost twenty million with the two point nine on the fifty dollar premium increase, that's only, I'm not as good at math as you are, Mr. Cale, but my round numbers tell me that that's only a one point one million dollar difference. And so I go back to the comments I made at the last meeting, which is I'm torn because half of our staff roughly are on the healthcare plan. But a, a, across the board raise helps everyone, it counts towards TRS retirement. And when I'm sitting here looking at these differences, and that number is negligible, and one option, I think, helps everyone, and one option helps everyone a little bit less, and helps some people in one different area more, but that doesn't count towards TRS contributions, and it's still that part only helps half of our staff, I'm, I'm kind of back to where I was, I think, last meeting, which is, I kind of like the option that helps everybody else that we know is going to maintain our competitiveness. And at the end of the day, at a, at a one point one million dollar delta, is not a significant enough difference, I think. That being said, I know that my colleagues up here might have differing opinions on this. This is in no way meant to say that any of my colleagues who want to support three are doing anything wrong. I think this is a total judgment call for where people are, given a lot of complicated factors and moving pieces that are going to affect us really for years to come. But that's to get the conversation started. That is where I'm at.
Yes, sir.
So I see Mr. Will Banks would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. Well said on the fact that we are in a lot of uncertainty with the legislative environment. There's no guarantees. We do have a lot of structural issues with our budget that we have to address. We've been very fortunate in the past that our community has supported public education in a big way. We adopted a VATRE, which gave us the ability to offer for four percent raises over four years, but that extra leverage that that has given us is that runway is running out. I, like you, I look at the difference of the four percent, and at three percent, when you add the fifty dollars, and I'm there on the fifty dollars, because when you look at how unaffordable it is, especially for our hourly employees, we need to do everything we can to help especially those. But the big difference that I think you miss is that fifty dollar increase at three hundred, three point nine four doesn't compound year after year, accelerating the red ink in our budget, the way a four percent raise versus a three percent raise. And I know not a lot of us are, come from a finance background, but you've got to keep in, into perspective that a three percent raise is not just, or a four percent raise is not just a four percent raise this year, it's also gets compounded with the raise next year and add infinitum, infinitum out into the future, or at least the average tenure of the employee. So that has, we've got to be very cognizant of that when looking at where we are right now and with the uncertainty, and we need to minimize those, that acceleration of expenses going forward. But at the same time, it's our priority as a board that we need to maintain competitiveness, competitiveness in the market. We have some tough budget challenges. It's correct, but we do need to main, we've got nineteen districts around us that employees can choose to go to. So it's a delicate balance. We need to maintain our competitiveness, but we also have to be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars and make sure we don't dig ourselves into a bigger hole than is necessary while still maintaining competitive pay for our teachers. I appreciate Ms. Richardson's comment. You talk to teacher after teacher after teacher that leaves this district. They're not leaving because of pay. They're leaving because of the culture or limited in their advancement, they feel. But a lot of times, it comes down to the environment on that campus where they are. That's one of the biggest factors. So you are absolutely right, Ms. Richardson. We need to constantly work on our culture and make sure that we're improving our culture in this district. That's one of the reasons we hired the superintendent that we hired. But given where we are, and we, you know, we've got a lot of people looking at this decision and, and where we are with our budget, we need to also be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. And I think, as you said, Mr. Choppa, we can still be there with a three percent raise and maintain our competitiveness at the top of the chart, but still be more frugal, or more mindful of not digging ourselves in, in a hole in the future, at least until the, the uncertainty of where the legislature is going to land. So even with adopting the three percent, the numbers that we're seeing, we're, we're still going to have, most likely, adopt a deficit budget this year, which is going to eat into that fund balance. We don't know if the legislature is going to, I, I guess my main concern legislatively is if you look at HB one hundred in the last session, which allocated the four point five to five billion dollars for teacher raises, that was just a drop in the bucket in terms of what's needing to keep up with inflation. It didn't even come close to keeping up with the twenty percent inflation that we've seen since the last time the basic allotment was adjusted back in HB three in twenty nineteen. So until we get more certainty, we've got to be a little cautious, but we still have to stick to our convictions of being competitive. And I think a three percent raise will do that. We can make up for that and not compound the fifty dollars, that three point nine million dollars, out into the future and still provide additional relief to those employees, especially our hourly employees that are, are going to be hit the hardest by the increase in TRS.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. Haynes.
Yes, thank you. So I'm not going to restate the points that have been made. I think that President Choppa and Mr. Will Banks both made compelling and valid arguments for, for each situation. I wanted to just chime in and state that I don't think it's a matter of being competitive. I think we are competitive. I think it's a matter of making sure that beyond being competitive, we're taking care of the educators in our district and that we're doing right by them. And I do think that culture is something we need to address in this district, a thousand percent. But I also think we need to be aware that teachers, while they may not be leaving because of, or they may be leaving because of culture, the ones that are staying are still struggling to make ends meet. And so those are the ones I'm looking at. I'm not looking at the ones that may be leaving because of culture. Dr. Smith was hired to address that, and I have no doubt that he will. He is a champion for culture and, you know, all of that. We were entrusted to be champions for the teachers in the district, and I'm comfortable with a four percent raise across the board and making sure that we're supporting all of our employees.
Ms. McMurro.
Ms. McMurro. Thank you, President Choppa. I agree with Ms. Haynes, all valid points made. I really concur with what you said, Ms. Haynes, and I, I do acknowledge, Mr. Will Banks, that we're looking at, we're looking at an insurance contribution that is not a constant, right? Year after year after year in our budget. But I also know that looking at this legislate, eighty-ninth session coming up, we are, another responsibility of ours as board members is to have those critical conversations with our legislators to ensure that they release the funds for public education. And I know this board, and I know that there's not one single person sitting up here that will not do that, just as we have in the past, and we are fully equipped and we have the relational capacity to do so. I actually have faith that this session, that will happen. And I do agree with Ms. Haynes. I, I, you know, I hate the spike that TRS is, I hate the premiums that we see. I'm also a public school employee, and I just could not believe my inbox when I saw that come through. But again, we have to ask ourselves, are we being equitable to all of our teachers and staff, whether they draw insurance from us or not? I know that many of our employees, both teaching and non-teaching staff, they have no other option, right? But we, we can't ignore the fact that half of our employees draw TRS. Many of them explore other options for their medical contribution. So in order to provide that equity, but also, you know, balance the fiscal responsibility piece, I would not advise taking both a four percent raise and a contribution. I think that, like you said, Mr. Will Banks, digging a bigger and bigger hole, we, we can't, we can't do that. We're already in the red. But to be equitable and to, as you said, Ms. Haynes, do right by our teachers and staff at this time, I, I really favor the idea of a four percent across the board raise.
Thank you, President Choppa. I concur that, to me, it's better to put the money where more people are.
Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Chapa. I concur that, to me, it's better to put the money where more people are and not all of our employees take our health insurance. So I feel like the $50 a month would be nice, but overall, I think we need to use the money for everyone and the fact that it will matter more in TRS than it would for the insurance. I know we're in a deficit, and it's difficult for me to say, but we've been very fortunate that we've been able to do that 4% for four years. And I think it's kept us very competitive, and I think we've kept a lot of our teachers here. I know culture is part of it, but so is a paycheck, and I think that's important. And I was prepared to go with the 3% or possibly even a 3.5, but if we don't do the $50 per employee for insurance, I would rather take that money and apply it toward an increase to 4%. So I'm leaning toward the 4%. I think our teachers deserve it. I think they need it, and I think that's what we need to do.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. I have Mr. Mike.
You know, I believe that this compensation package should be a portion of everything that we look at overall with regards to taking care of our staff and our educators in a very, very important job. We've already discussed culture multiple times, and we have to give Dr. Smith some leadway to allow that to occur. When I look at some of these numbers and then I look at some of the stats that have been put out, I do have a question with regards to this 3%. One of the things that we look at, right, is retention, but then we also have to look at recruitment when we're losing staff to other districts. If we do a 3%, where would that put us as far as the zero year, the new teacher starting out? Where would that put them on the categories of rankings with the other school districts?
Help me out, Holly. Come on up.
Good evening. So I've done some projections on if we did a 3% and our neighbors, neighboring districts did a 3%, and that still puts us market competitive. Just for a reference point, it would approximately put us at two. Grand Prairie, if they were to do a 3%, they'd be slightly ahead of us. At year five, it'd be number one. Year 10, number two. Year 15, number one. Year 20, number one. Year 25, number one. And year 30 at four.
Out of 20.
Out of 20. And just also know, these are estimates, but the best estimates that I was able to calculate.
But what's a zero year pay?
Zero year pay would be $64,000 for Arlington ISD.
Dr. Smith, did you have something to say?
Yeah, just one thing on that, too. Just everyone, I hope knows that these decisions are being made in other districts around this area right now. And so the action that you take tonight, too, while Holly just gave you a projection, could be surpassed at a later meeting, and I just want to make sure everybody knows that, too.
Yeah.
Everybody, remember, there's a little bit of gamesmanship that happens on this.
Mr. Mike, anything further? Okay, I have Ms., I have Mr. Will Banks. Are you, Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. And to your point, you estimated everyone at a 3%, correct? But in reality, a number of districts and quite large ones have offered, have already announced 2% raises, correct?
At least one, yes. By one, I mean one large district, yes.
But several others have, smaller districts have announced.
Yes.
That are in the list, the top 10.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I have Ms. Richardson.
Holly, can I ask you a question off of your sheet, please? Okay, we said that if we did 3%, that our 20-year-plus teachers would be, if the number stayed the same, would be ranked number four, we would go to number four.
That's at year 30.
Year 30. Okay, what about if we did it 4%? Where would that put us?
If we did a 4% in our market comparison, neighboring districts did a 3, we would be at year, or at first place, year zero all the way through year 25, and at year 30, that would put us at two. That's assuming the 3% estimate model and a 4% for Arlington ISD, and then that would put us at a starting salary of $64,600.
Thank you, Holly. I just want to make sure, when we're talking about teachers who have invested that long of a time, and we're making sure everybody else is in the top one or two, to see those teachers who have invested so long in their career then be dropped down, I didn't like hearing that they would be number four.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ms. Haynes, you've signaled you may have a motion, you have a comment, question?
If there's no more discussion, I am prepared to make a motion.
We can make a motion and continue discussion if you'd like to proceed that way.
Okay, so then, yeah, I would if, if we're good. Okay. So I'd like to move to approve the compensation plan, which includes a 4% teacher raise based on market, a 4% midpoint raise for all other staff on the Arlington ISD pay ranges, and authorize appropriate equity adjustments.
I have a motion by Ms. Haynes. It's read. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Vice President McMurro. Hearing that there is a desire for additional discussion, we will not move to a vote at this time. I have Mr. Will Banks with discussion.
I have a question for Holly. So in the 30-year range, how many teachers approximately are in that category?
I don't know that number, but I can get that for you.
Okay, but it's fair to say that's probably the smallest range that we have as teachers?
That's accurate, yes.
Less than 100?
I would say, I would, I feel more comfortable to say probably less than 200.
Okay. Out of approximately how many teachers?
About 4,200.
4,200.
4,200, okay. And so we'd still be at number four. So above the top five.
Yes.
For that one and one at pretty much everything else.
Yes, based on the estimate that I've prepared.
Yeah. I will say it again, like, this 4% will compound year after year after year, digging us further and further and further in a hole. With the uncertainty, I think it's in our best interest in our, being good financial stewards of this district, to be at 3% right now until we can get clarity on those drivers. Because, again, we have to be a TRE, which allowed us to do those 4%, but we are now maxed out, and we can't go back to the well to ask for increase in tax rate. So we've got to be, proceed cautiously while still being competitive. And in my book, being number one in most categories is very competitive.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I would, was going to sum out and call, and move to Ms. Haynes's pending motion unless there's further desire for discussion or comment. Ms. Fowler.
What would the difference be between a 4% and a 3.5? Just ballpark.
As far as starting salary?
No, in terms of budget?
Budget.
I think it'd be about $2 million, just drawing a line between those two.
The 3% was recommended in what we just showed at 19.7 million, and the 4% was at 23, so although I'm estimating at this point, so the difference between those is about $4 million, so you'd probably be adding $2 million instead of $4 million.
Okay. All right. Now, I can see Ms. Moss over there doing numbers in her head and thinking about it. I don't know, would we be more comfortable with 3.5, or does it not make that much difference?
If I, I was going to sum up to that point, Ms. Fowler. I, as I said before, I think if we were looking in a situation where the numbers were greater and in the delta, in that the difference, you know, it made a meaningful difference on how we would approach our finances going forward, I think I would feel differently. But what I heard from my colleagues tonight is we want to do right by our staff. I think folks recognize that we have the runway. Mr. Will Banks's point about compounding is very well taken. I don't want to discount his concern on that front, but I also heard my colleagues say that they would really like to do more than 3% in some way, and the way that it seemed like there was some coalescing around was 50 on the healthcare. And I go back to, yes, that amount wouldn't compound. I get, at some level, I get that. But then, we're so close to the four that helps everyone. I go back to your point that you originally made, that also counts towards TRS credit for our staff, and that's our traditional approach. And given the $1.1 million difference, at that point, I don't think, whether it's 1.1, whether it's two, whether it's three, it's not going to change, and I want to be clear, and I think I share very much Mr. Will Banks's concerns on this point, it doesn't change the fact that we have to do a substantial amount of work next year on our budget regardless. We don't, we can't bank on getting some money from the ledge. I think some folks think we'll get something, but I don't think that it's realistic to think that whatever we do get is going to fix the issues that we're going to have that we know because of our enrollment decline over the last two years that we're going to have to address. That's a much bigger thing that we have to tackle, and one or two or $3 million is not going to change that, in my mind. I very much respect the concerns that were expressed to the contrary.
And I like the idea of giving the 4% because they deserve it and they've earned it, and it keeps us competitive. And then, for this next year, we can look and see, what do we need to do? Where can we cut? What can we do to tighten our budget so that it won't hurt us bad, right? But I think, I think, I think our teachers deserve it. I think it's going to keep us competitive, and I think it's something we need to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. I have Mr., Dr. Smith has been persistently over here.
Yeah, no worries. You endured me already tonight, so I am sure you're enduring me.
Been enduring you for a while.
I wanted to just thank the board for having a good dialogue tonight. I know this is uncomfortable, and what I know about this board is that every one of you are all about teachers and students in our district and staff members. You want to do what's right overall while balancing fiscal responsibility, and that's extremely important. I also want to echo the same thing I've told you all along. We will figure things out whichever way you go. No matter whether it's 3% or 4%, I need to make sure you all realize, next year is going to be tough. There is no indication that we are going to have anything passed by the time we're talking budget next spring, and the balance that we will have at that time is either number of staff or pay raises. And when we have increased the pay, then we're talking number of staff. And that is tough for a district to dive into. And again, we're going to have to talk about that no matter what until the legislature finally takes action and funds school appropriately in the state of Texas. And while I agree, we all in various districts used our advocacy voice in the past, and it didn't get us anything. So we can't quite say it's going to be fixed next spring. And in fact, we saw last legislative session, special session after special session, and nothing was fixed at that point. So no matter what the case is, 3%, 4%, additional insurance or not, next year is going to be a challenging year budget-wise for us, and it is not going to be something that any of us enjoys. And I need to be honest about that and make sure you realize that. And so whatever decision tonight is made, we will make it work, and we're excited to support our staff in whatever way the board would wish. But I just also want to make sure we always think about, we have to look at the future as well, and we do have some really big challenges in front of us.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I've enjoyed this discussion tonight. It's a hard discussion. We are fortunate to be in the position of being able to consider between multiple different good options, but I think there has been a consensus expressed. There's a motion pending on the floor, and so we will move to a vote on Ms. Haynes's motion for, as read. All trustees have voted. All trustees unanimously support Ms. Haynes's motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cal.
President Chapa, I just want to make sure that we have this right for the record and right for our adjustments moving forward. And so that vote was for a 4% raise and no additional insurance dollars.
Yes, I think. Yes, as I have Ms. Haynes's motion, she moved to approve the compensation plan, including a 4% teacher raise based on market, a 4% midpoint raise for all other staff on the Arlington ISD pay ranges, and to authorize appropriate equity adjustments, as presented. We have no more action items for tonight. We'll proceed to consent agenda. Consent agenda, of course, it consists of routine items that have been grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, do we have any requests to remove consent agenda items? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? I have, I'll give Ms. Fowler the motion. I will give Ms. Secretary Richardson the second. Motion from Ms. Fowler, a second by Secretary Richardson, to accept the consent agenda as presented. Please vote. All trustees voting in favor, the consent agenda has been adopted. We'll now move on to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any speakers for non-agenda items?
I have president.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. Moving on to superintendent reports. Dr. Smith?
I appreciate you enduring me just for a few more minutes. I'd like to share some information about some exciting news that's happened in our district this year and, excuse me, this month in my superintendent's report. First, I want to congratulate our class of 2024 students. It was a great stretch to get to attend nine graduations and see so many outstanding Arlington ISD students who are exceptionally prepared for their lives after Arlington ISD and because of their time in our district. I want to thank our parents, teachers, and staff members for helping these students reach an outstanding milestone. And while I'm talking about graduates, I do want to single out Connor Moore from Saguin High School. Connor wrapped up his 13-year Arlington ISD career last week by graduating cumulati with perfect attendance for 13 straight years. Congrats to his parents for making sure Connor was healthy. Congrats to Connor for his dedication. I also want to congratulate one of our teachers, Catherine Chu. She was the one who planted the seed about perfect attendance for Connor way back in third grade. That just speaks to the kind of impact that teachers can make. Next, congrats to our newest Wall of Fame members, who we were able to celebrate them this week at a packed house at our professional development center. The Wall of Fame is something that's special because it honors our students and staff members who are achieved, who have achieved significant milestones across the state or nationally this school year. We have more than 250 new Wall of Famers in our district. And my last congratulations goes out to Young Junior High for their Out of This World Moon Tree Project. If you stop by Young, there's a tree seedling that's traveled into lunar orbit as part of a NASA project. Young applied for the tree seedling program and was granted one. There were only 50 granted out of more than 1,300 applicants. The tree will now be used in the science curriculum at the school. So those celebrations are a highlight for us in Arlington ISD. One more quick item, and we'll breeze through a couple of additional slides. I've talked to you all about setting district goals coming up, and I think it's important for us to talk about those district goals moving forward. I believe there's more slides. Here we go. District goal development, you know, our goal in all of this, or goal, our purpose in all of this is to make sure that we're pointing our district in the same direction. That's one of the key elements of the role of the Board of Trustees and the superintendent is we work together, is that we ensure alignment in our system and that we're all trying to achieve the same thing. These goals help us do that. Next slide, please. Those are from our BAA legal policy. Those are specific responsibilities for Board of Trustees. As you see, there's vision statement and comprehensive goals for the district and superintendent in that we monitor progress toward these goals. So it's a big step for us as a school district to do these. Next slide. It also is governance best practice. There are two references here. One of those books, I think many of you are reading right now, Campbell and Fulon are the authors, and they talk about what the role of the trustees is, along with Don McAdams, who was a long time ago part of Houston ISD back in the early 2000s, and then worked for CRSS for years after that, wrote an amazing book about what school boards can do to improve student outcomes, and he also... And he also notes the responsibilities and the power of a Board of Trustees in setting direction. Format of these goals and progress measures that I would ask you to consider over the next few days before we get together for a Team of Eight training is to really think about some big, broad, overarching goals. I'm not asking you to come with a SMART goal. That is a next step in the process after the fact. But what is it that you, as a trustee, want to accomplish in our school district? And I'm going to be asking you for individual feedback before we get together on Tuesday about that. Think of these as transformational goals. So in order to address the culture that we've talked about tonight, what is it that you think would have to change? What is it that you want to see regarding parent engagement? What is it that you want to see regarding our facilities in the school district? Those are big, broad, transformational goals that we would start with. After that, we would dive into what a key progress measure would be, and that's where the administration comes in and makes recommendations to you. And we say, based on the goals that you've adopted, board, here's what we would say is a big step for us that we can accomplish in a year, and this is what we will report out on over the course of a year and say how we're making progress toward those. So that would be the proposed structure of the goals and progress measures for you to consider as we develop these coming up. Possible goal category topics? Oh, look at that picture. That's a good one. You can see some there. Obviously, we want something to do with academic achievement, student experiences, student well-being and safety, et cetera. Those are all optional categories. I would encourage the board to really think about trying to narrow it down to three or four, five maybe at the most, because we know that the more we get going, the more, the longer the list is, the harder it is to actually produce what we want to produce in our system. So we're going to work over the course of our Team of Eight training and in our next meeting, hopefully, to try and land a couple big, broad, overarching goals for us to build off over the summer. Potential next steps, we get that board input individually, and then in a Team of Eight discussion, we come to you with goal adoption, either potentially at June 18th meeting or early in August when we come back. And then we go into key progress measure development, key progress measure adoption, and finalize the superintendent evaluation instrument. As you all know, those goals end up being a part of a superintendent eval, you hold me accountable to achieve the things that the board wants to achieve as well. So those are potential next steps for us to dive into as a Team of Eight as we continue to grow and work together. So I appreciate your time tonight. I ask you to really think about those goals moving forward, and I will be in touch with you individually. Oh, one more slide, sorry. What are we trying to achieve? That's that notion of unity of purpose, is to ensure that we, as a team, aren't straying all the time, looking at different avenues, but really trying to say, here's what we want to improve over the course of the year, and we hold ourselves accountable to do with it. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for enduring me.
Not going to live that one down. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Lots of work to do on a variety of fronts. We'll move on to school board reports at this time. Trustees, do we have any members with reports? Okay, seeing none, I do have a report. It is June, and I am honored to celebrate Pride Month and recognize the contributions and worth of our LGBTQ students, families, and staff. Everyone deserves to live, work, and learn in an accepting environment that's free from discrimination and respectful of their dignity. I hope that this district is and continues to be such a place. We have been fortunate to live in a time of strong progress toward equal rights. Challenges remain. Recent events do show that progress can be fragile, and we must always be vigilant against the idea that equality moves only in one direction. But during this month, let's take a moment to celebrate a more inclusive society. Let's recommit to fighting injustice and to creating safe and welcoming learning spaces, and let's have pride in our LGBTQ friends, family, and community. Madam Secretary, do we have any items to consider this evening?
We do not. We are ready to be done so we can find out if the Mavs win.
All right, go Mavs. It is 8:55 PM, and this meeting is adjourned.
Yeah. Go Mavs. (applause).[1770.83]